You ready for me? You ready? All right. Okay. We call the meeting to order. You want to do roll call?
Commissioner Cardenas?
Present.
Commissioner Cooley, absent. Commissioner Douglas?
Present.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Chair Cho?
Yes.
Move forward.
Thank you. John, you want to leave the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Your vice?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, thank you for doing that. It's nice to see it in this day and age.
Okay.
Approve order of the agenda. I approve it. Was there, in the agenda, was there one comment? Or was it the public? You said that we had a typo or...
Oh, it's on the, yeah, on the minutes.
Oh, okay.
A little minor thing.
Okay. Sounds good. So approval of the agenda. Blue folder item supplemental?
Yeah, we have two of them. One for item 9A, which is Forest Spur Lane, and another corresponding for 10A, which is Two Possum Ridge Road. Those are included for the commissioners.
Great. Thank you very much.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good evening. Alfred Visko, 15th Century Road. I am becoming increasingly concerned, and I've raised this issue in the Planning Commission before, and I raised it at City Council. I'm becoming concerned about the number of fire pits that are being apparently approved. And I did some, I did some research, and nowhere in our municipal code, nor anywhere in the Los Angeles County Fire Code could I find an exception to the barring of outdoor open fires in wildfire risk areas, which is in the LA County Fire Code. I couldn't find anything that even talks about fire pits being an exception to that. Now, you can argue that a fire pit is not an open outdoor fire. However, I would submit to you that if you do some basic research, you will find even by vendors that sell fire pits. In fact, one website calls themselves We Love Fire. They classify fire pits as an open outdoor fire. So maybe it's just been something that's never, nobody's ever raised before? Or maybe there's something I'm missing, that there's some type of exception somewhere to fire pits? But I'm going to raise this issue. I want to raise it here tonight. I wanted to do it in the open comment so it doesn't seem like I'm beating on the applicants, which both have fire pits in their plans. This is a general comment, and I will raise it at City Council and with the association. We should not be allowing fire pits unless there is an exception, that I'm not aware of, to the LA County Fire Code's prohibition of open fires in wildfire areas, which of course we are. In fact, if you drive in the city, you see signs saying no open fires. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John, we should get that on the agenda at some point in time, or maybe you can talk to City Council and see if they want us to address it. And I encourage you to go over to the City Councilor.
Don't worry.
Yeah. No.
Don't worry.
We get, we get our direction from them, so, yeah.
To be clear, there's fire pits and there's open fires. Open fires are regulated by the county. A fire pit enables an open fire to exist, but those guidelines about, I think we're in a fire hazard zone four, you know, ebb and flow, the restriction of building of a fire pit is different, so.
Well, I, I'm not aware of, I'm not, if you can direct me to something in, in the LA County Fire Code or in our municipal codes or somewhere that says that fire pits are an exception to the no open fire...
Fire pits themselves aren't a fire. They're a fire pit.
Well, if you read, if you read the LA Fire Code, it's very clear what it says.
Yes, it's very clear that there's no open fires in a fire hazard.
But what else would you, what else would you, what would be the purpose of a fire pit other than to make a big giant fire? That's the whole purpose of a fire pit. Okay? So you understand what I'm saying? So it makes no sense to me that you can allow a fire pit and then tell them you can't have an open fire.
I think they distinguish between contained fire, which is the fire pit itself.
I would.
I implore you.
If they define that somewhere.
I was going to suggest you actually contact the people at the fire department.
Well, fire department, you know, I've talked to fire.
How many fires, let me finish. How many fires have been started from a fire pit? And/or.
Yeah, I don't care about that.
That's something we care about.
Yeah, but I care, I care about minimizing the potential for ignition of fire in Rolling Hills as well as outside of Rolling Hills. So the more potential you, you know as well as I do what the statistics are. Eighty-five percent of the fires are caused by human activity. Okay? One sort or another. This includes electrical fires. This includes people throwing cigarettes. This includes driving up and down the roads and creating sparks. So eighty-five percent are caused by human activity. The lower the probability of human activity, the less fire ignition we could potentially have in Rolling Hills and in the surrounding areas. So unless there's something, and I've talked, listen, I've talked to LA County Fire. I've talked to Cal Fire down in Riverside County. And you talk to these folks and you get sixteen different answers to sixteen, the same question. And unless they can show me in writing specifically where it says that fire pits are somehow exempt from the no open fire prohibition in wildfire areas, I, I refuse to believe that they're exempt. Show me. Don't, don't tell me. Tell me verbally. Go talk to the fire station. The fire station doesn't know. They only know, they may think since we're approving them that we're okay with it, and it's okay with our municipal code, and they're just rubber stamping it. I don't know. That's why I'm bringing it up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Consent calendars, 7A approval affidavit, posting for the Planning Commission regular meeting, March 19th, 2024. 7B approval the minutes for the January 16th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. 7C approval resolution of Planning Commission, the city of Rolling Hills, two-year time extension previously approved for zoning case number 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve all items on the consent calendar.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Perfect. I see that there is no excluded consent calendar items.
I'm sorry, just real quick. Can we get a second on that item?
All second.
Okay. All in favor. Now, is this where we need to change the language on one item?
No, no, no. No, it's, it's fine. It was just a clerical issue in the minutes that we can.
Okay. Okay. Sounds great. So we'll move on. The public hearings on items continued from previous meeting. This is zoning case number 23-100. This is for Four Spur Lane Road. Stephanie, are you giving us an overview?
I am doing an overview tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners and residents. I'm here to present zoning case number 23-100 for a site plan review and variance for the subject property located at Four Spur Lane. The subject property is located at the southwest portion of the city. As you, notices were also sent out to all of the owners within a thousand-foot radius. The zoning for the property, oh, just wanted to mention that this item was continued from the January 16th Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission directed staff to work with the applicants to revise the plans, to decrease the disturbance and grading. And we were waiting for the RHCA to approve the relocated driveway on Spur Lane because it encroached into the existing 25-foot RHCA easement. And so on February 22nd, the RHCA did approve the driveway on Four Spur Lane, on Spur Lane. A little project background. The zone is RAS 1. The net lot area is 47,063 square feet or 1.8 acres. There is an existing 3,000-square-foot, 525-single-family residence that was built in 1951. The existing residence is 14 feet from the front roadway easement, 24 feet from the northwestern, eastern side of the property line. It is 25 feet from the northwestern side of the property line, and it has a rear slope which is 28, 288 feet from the downslope from the building pad. And it was built in 1951, and in 1962 it was approved for a variance, for an addition. Here is an existing site plan of the property. I just want to show you right here that there's, this is the existing driveway. There's an existing driveway located on the east side of the property. The new driveway is, has been relocated and approved. It, it's been approved by the Traffic Commission and also the RHCA because of the easement, but it's been shifted. It's been moved to the west side, the northwest side of the property is where the new driveway is going to be located. So some of the required approvals of, like I said before, that this was previously continued from January 16th. It was, so a site plan review was required for the demolition of the existing structure and for the construction of a new 4,870-square-foot residence with a 967-square-foot attached garage. Site plan review is also required to expand the existing building pad. It's a smaller, narrow lot, and the existing building pad is 7,260 square feet. The project proposes to add a total of 6,120 square feet for a total building pad of 13,380 square feet. The new residence meets all the requirements for reduced setbacks on a small lot in the city of Rolling Hills. Lots that are smaller than 1.25 have different setbacks. There's also a site plan review for 1,110-square-foot swimming pool and spa. That has not changed. So one of the changes are the new landscape. Previously, the proposal was for 6,805, 6,585 square feet from New Hardscape. And, no, that's the New Hardscape. Sorry about that. And previously, they were proposing 8,944 square feet. So there's been a decrease in the Hardscape. Also, previously, the project proposed a total of 7,600 cubic yards of grading, and the applicants have been working and studying the site. They were able to reduce the grading quantities to 4,750 cubic yards of grading. The retaining walls, there has just been a slight change in the retaining walls, but that was also part of the approval as well. Also, a variance, variances. There's a variance for the project to exceed the 40% disturbance. Previously before, the proposal was for 31,970 square feet of disturbed area, and it was decreased down to 29,880 cubic yards, square feet. Sorry, square feet. So now the new disturbance is at a little bit lower than before, but it's at 63.49%. So it exceeds by 23.49, and previously it was 27.9%. And here are some of the changes from before. Did you want me to go over them, or should I go?
Yeah. We're, we're, briefly, some, a lot of the coverage has gone down. There's still under the maximum. In terms of special coverage, the maximum allowed is 20%, and they're at 16.86%. They actually reduced that from 18%. The flatwork has been reduced as well, down from 8,900 square feet to about 6,500 square feet. Total lot coverage for structural and flatwork, there's a 35% maximum permitted, and that is down to 30.85%, reduced from 38%. Total site disturbance, you have a 40% maximum, and they do exceed that, and that's what the variance is for. So they're proposing 63.49%, exceeding the maximum requirement by 23.49%. Building pad coverage is a guideline. There's a 30% maximum there, and they're at about 56.63%.
All right. Thanks, John. Okay. So here's a side-by-side comparison of the first proposal. As you can see, this was the first, this is the site plan that was submitted back in, at the first meeting, and then down below is the second proposal. This, the, for the first proposal, there was a stable and the secondary driveway and a corral. There were some concerns from the residents and Traffic Commission, but it was not approved, and the applicants have decided maybe to proceed with that at a later date. Some of the, so the bottom proposal right here, there's a set aside area, thousand-square-foot set aside area with a stable access that fronts on to, from Spur Lane. So this is the future set aside area for the project. Also here, this is, this was the pavilion. The pavilion has since been removed, as you can see from the site plan here, which also lessens the limited, limited line of grading because of the stairs and the removal of the pavilion. The swimming pool is still the same. The decking is still the same. The garage right here has been extended out seven by seven feet. So you can see that down here on this, this, the second site plan right here. So these are the changes side by side, and the one at the bottom is the new proposed site plan. This is the north elevation, and the max ridge height, I believe, is... Luis, what was the max ridge height again? This is the north elevation. This is the west elevation. The south elevation, and then here's the east elevation. So the, that, the floor plans and the elevations have not really changed. Here's 21 feet. So it's 21 feet. Grading, that was one of the concerns that the planning commissioners had at their last meeting. So here's a side-by-side proposal of the grading plans. The first proposal was for 76, 7,600 cubic yards of grading, including 3,800 cubic yards of cut and 3,800 cubic yards of fill. And as you can see, grading has been, since then, hence been removed for the proposed stable and, the stable and secondary driveway. This is the, this is the new grading plan right here. The new proposal has been reduced. Grading quantities have been reduced. They are now at 4,750 cubic yards of grading, including 2,375 cubic yards of cut and 2,375 cubic yards of, of fill, all to be balanced on site. So this portion here, the red is the area that's going to be cut, and then the cut will be used to fill and expand the pool and the, and the, the pool and the deck, this area here, cut and balanced. And also, this is a side-by-side, it's kind of hard to tell, but the project before, the proposed was to cut seven, eight feet into the existing grade, and the project was revised to cut into the slope to expand the building pad at seven feet, cut into seven feet. And there's also been a preliminary landscape plan that's been included in the plans, and the Planning Commission should condition the, probably the heights of the trees, the proposed trees, so that way then they do not obstruct any of the views. The community, the first meeting, public notices went out, and it was noticed in the Daily Breeze on January 6th, and then it was re-noticed again for the March 19th Planning Commission meeting on 3-7. And all notices went out to residents within a thousand-foot radius. There are some project, there were some project concerns. The first one was that staff, we did receive an email from, and pictures, from Chip House, who's represent, who's representing the House family from Three Spur Lane. Mr. House expressed their family's concerns regarding the proposed roofline height and the landscape that may impair the existing view. The email was intended for the February 19th Planning Commission meeting, but we didn't have that meeting. And also on 3-18, staff received an email from Marta House expressing concerns regarding the height and the roof views. On 3-19 this morning, at the, at the field trip meeting, Mr. Chip House and his brother attended the field trip meeting. They expressed their concerns regarding the proposed ridge line, the fact that it is raised higher in A-line pitch of the proposed roof, grading, landscape, and also the disturbance. And at the Planning Commission meeting, field trip meeting this morning, the planning commissioners discussed the proposed walls, the house being raised 18 inches, the disturbance reduction, movement of the dirt, original proposal that was first submitted. Also, the fill of the area at the back of the building pad was also discussed this morning, and preserving the view. The planning commissioners and staff also walked over to Three Spur Lane to look at the view and the obstructions. So this project is categorically...
One, one other thing with that. We did receive late correspondence from Marta Housky. She expressed similar concerns as what was, as what Stephanie had summarized, but she had mentioned that her family had moved to Rolling Hills in 1959. They'd been good neighbors, and she does have concerns about the views, especially of Catalina and the ocean views. And she also included some attached photos, which I believe you had seen when we walked outside there during the free, filled with this morning. So I can pass this around.
The project is categorically exempt. It's, project has been determined categorically exempt pursuant to the California Tusequa, Section 15, 303, Class 3, new construction of a single-family residence and accessory structures. So we're, it's recommended that we open the public hearing and receive public testimony, discuss the project, direct the applicant and staff. There's also been a resolution prepared if the Planning Commission decides to approve the project. And I just also wanted to include that the architect is here if you have any questions, and we're here to answer any questions as well. And at this moment, that concludes my presentation, but Luis is here, and he's going to provide his presentation.
Before we jump into that, and you may not have the answer, but Luis might. I heard 18 inches today in terms of ridge line racing, but then I just heard the cut went from seven feet, I'm sorry, eight feet in the original plan to seven feet in the current plan. So I don't know if, if we can reconcile that maybe with you. Okay. Perfect.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. So thank you very much. Very thorough as usual. Much appreciated. So at this point in time, I'm going to open it up to the public. If you'd like to speak, please come in, come up and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Luis de Morais. My company is Enviro Techno Architecture. I am the architect for the project. Thank you for taking the time to consider our project once again. First, I want to thank Stephanie and John for the hard work and very thorough in all the details. It's always challenging filling out those applications and getting to the point where we're at. So thank you both for doing that. It's showing here, but it's not showing there.
It's just right here. It's the next screen. It's a, yeah.
Okay. You can get rid of this menu. I think if we click outside, maybe we can go. Yeah. There you go. Okay. That's okay. So I'm not going to go into all the details that Stephanie already did or my earlier presentation in the first hearing, but I just thought I would summarize with the changes that we did that we're proposing tonight. And as important is that we listened to your recommendations. We went back and we studied how was, what was the way that we could reduce the disturbance, reduce the grading quantity. Then Bolton is here. He's the master of Rolling Hills, so he worked very hard at working with us and trying to accommodate and come up with something that would be more attractive to you. So in essence, what we did was, I'll jump back real quick. So we raised the pad about 18 inches. The discrepancy on the numbers is because the lot is not flat. So some areas, we were, we typically were using the finished floor elevation at the front door as the datum, but there are some areas that the cut seemed taller, and as you walking through the back, it's all over the place. So, yeah, so in Stephanie's review of the section that then prepared, it was showing higher because where it's cut. So, but in my view, working off the pad, we were originally at about six and a half feet. Then we came back to five feet, and again, using that as the benchmark, not all the spots, because there are some areas that are deeper than that. In this exercise, we reduced the disturbed area 2,000 square feet, and which is about four, four and a half percent from where we were. So significant change. The grading quantity at 2,850 cubic yards. So another significant change, making any effort we could to minimize the impact to the natural topography. We shifted the building closer to Spur Lane to also allow that reduction. We did add another garage space to the side of the building towards Spur Lane, which in case we have some trouble with some of the areas down below, we figured we, this would be a good, you know, backup to, to have and have enough area for the cars, for the kids, for them being off the street, which is really the essence why we relocated the driveway. One, to allow that we would be able to turn around within the property and have a safe egress out of the lot, be able to park a couple cars in the motor court. So there was the whole idea behind relocating. And it is the lowest point on the site, which reduced our incline to, to the garage elevation. So the garage got extended to fit one more stall, eleven and a half feet. The building raised, which the ridges raised, raised with it, 18 inches. And then as Stephanie said, we've removed the pavilion and, and the barn and driveway from this review. Just a quick diagram. We wanted to illustrate the green areas are the disturbed areas that were removed, so make it really easy to follow. And then we did a little outline. The outer outline was the old building footprint, how it shifted over. And then this little block here is the expanded garage, which are still behind the setback. So this, just easy to follow. At the time, Vice Chair Kirkpatrick wanted me to identify and do a study of the sections of the, the areas where we had at the end of the building. So we did cut some sections. I updated them for this presentation. So basically on section A, we are the side here. As we discussed on site, the new retaining wall is going to be below the existing topography. A little bit of the grade is going to slope down to mitigate that. So we're going basically from zero to about three feet on this side. And then at this corner here, we have about five feet, which is basically this side right here, section B, which we are filling in and building up the grade on that side of the corner. And then we did... And then we did also a section C, which I want to discuss that in a second. We have a little indent here that we wanted to at least put it on the table today for a barbecue to be out of our line of sight. So if we look at this blow up, right now, what we're proposing is that our barbecue is inside of the side yard setback to be able to clear the view from the kitchen and the outdoor room. This is, the orange is showing, what would it be like if we pulled away from the setback? It would block the entire view, this is a very narrow lot. So even though this is not on the table today, Stephanie and I talked about, if I, to get a reaction from you, if that is a variance that we could pursue in order to allow us to have the open view from the kitchen and cabana. So I know that's not on the table, but I would love to get a reaction and see if that's something we can come back and apply it and potentially even consider that.
We would amend the project to act of our true future date.
So is that clear? Maybe I can even. If I can blow it up. So anyway, this, this is the existing with the front bar, with the back bar and barbecue. In orange would be if we were to move it into the yard and clear of the setback, which is the green line. So if we were to clear, we would block the entire view. We don't really have another place to do this. So I have a list of things that I discussed on the first hearing that I think they covered pretty well, comparisons and, but I don't think, unless we need to go back to any of those topics. I have it here, otherwise I'd be glad to hear any, any questions or any comments.
I think based on the neighbors today, I, and thank you, by the way. You listened, we always like that when you come back and you're working with us. So that's, that's great, that's collaborative effort. Obviously, we heard the neighbors today suggest about eighteen inches down. We went up there and looked at the site, I think you were with us.
Yeah.
And I personally, I thought they had a good point. I could see that, it was important regardless of where from the house, this, that, whatever, just walking out their door, I think it's important to me, it would be important to them. So that eighteen inches, I thought was interesting. I think when we were in front of the house, about twenty minutes before that, we were kind of playing with and you were good about saying, you know, we've got this big, little bit of a hole right there. And, you know, it does look like it could be shifted. I don't know what that does to both sides of the property and particularly the north side of the property relative to the garage and everything. But it looks like if the ridge line was taken down and if that means that you're actually setting the house down to keep the proportions exactly the same, you're going down eighteen inches, you kind of resolve everything. And I don't think it would impact your view at all, because obviously nothing's on that side. So that would be my only suggestion. Apologize, it was just after this morning, this is the second time and we missed a month. So I don't know what we could do about that, but I think that was my only concern today, was that eighteen inches. Otherwise, I look at that and, you know, not to ruin our comments earlier, but that, that was my only issue with that. And I appreciate you had a good point about the views on the sides, particularly where the old driveway was, is better. And, but it was important that one peak was blocked and eighteen inches doesn't seem like it would impact the project much if it was lowered that much.
And why don't, why don't we hold that for now? Let's see what the rest of the audience has to say. We may ask you to come back at the end of it and we can have a further discussion on that.
Thank you.
Sorry for my head. That's all right. I bypassed some other people.
Good evening, Dan Bolton, Bolton Engineering. We're the civil engineer on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for hearing the project, happy to take any questions. This may already be clear from the presentation, the staff's excellent presentation. The disturbed area, you know, of course, we heard the concerns about the disturbed area. The disturbed area, while it was reduced, I, it was reduced more than the top line numbers suggest and as much as we're also being responsive to the removing of the access on the lower road for the future stable, that stable's now future because the zoning or because, yeah, because the Rolling Hills zoning code obligates us to include grading quantities and disturbed area for future stable set asides. And we're now taking the access down the side property line. The numbers don't appear on the top line to reflect just how much it's been drawn in. But I know Luis was beating on me extensively to reduce the disturbed area as much as possible. So, but I'm happy to answer any other-
I feel so bad for you.
It's rough.
Okay, so I, I appreciate you coming. I, I think you can see the direction that we are kind of encouraging you to go. So, and we, as Greg said, we truly appreciate that you listened last time, tried to modify, took, took a lot of the grading away. My question to you though is, in, in trying to move this ahead, by reducing it by eighteen inches, taking it down, and I, I, I think you're going to have a better project because of that. I also think it's a win-win for you guys and for the neighbor. My question to you is, by dropping it eighteen inches, what does that do to retaining walls? Does it increase retaining walls? Does it add more height or does it actually work better?
I actually think it would potentially work better. You know, the house shifted horizontal, you know, essentially what we did in part with the raising it of eighteen inches is that we translated the house and the other elements of the site uphill. And so when the pad raised, it essentially, you know, a bit more two to one slope going up, a bit less two to one slope coming down on the uphill side. So if we go back to reducing it at eighteen inches, we would probably shift the house somewhat back downhill. And I think there'd be, you know, we'd have to look at it in terms of what the, the dynamics are because of the, the, some of the other, you know, minor revisions that happened to the house as part of the design process and being responsive to the comments that we got last time. But generally speaking, I'd say the retaining walls on the uphill side adjacent to the driveway are relatively low. We did some additional slope grading above those that you saw in the field in order to keep those low, we can do a bit more. And so I don't think we'd have to necessarily add retaining walls. We certainly wouldn't have to go higher than five feet. We might go higher than two and a half feet, but we could keep them averaging the two and a half feet or less that's required by code. And it would reduce potentially the wall on the downhill side by the master bedroom. So the wall that kind of wraps around, I'm going to say as you're standing on spur, looking at the house, the house, the retaining wall on the down slope side that's to the right, that wall would be potentially reduced by lowering the pad eighteen inches. And so I think where it hurts, it doesn't hurt as much as where it helps.
I, I think your driveway gets slightly steeper, but I think it's a good trade-off. I think you're going to have a much more usable lot. I think it, it just solves a lot of, a lot of problems. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, board members, mayor, people. Are you Mrs. Lukic? Just want to, hey, welcome.
Thank you.
It's a great neighborhood and I count your husband, buddy, you're an actor. We're here for a user-friendly thing. I appreciate the cooperation of the board, the good questions that were being presented. And I'm speaking behalf of my sister Marta and my brother Lars and all our nieces and nephews. My parents moved there in nineteen fifty-nine and we've got a whole tribe throughout the country. But I'm just doing what I think any of you would probably do and-
Oh, sir, can you say your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Chip House, we live right across the street, number three, where the board went to visit today.
Thank you, and can you, you can take a seat also.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And anyway, I think the board kind of answered the questions of what my concern was. Representing the family was just the vertical height. And I think the rest of the plan looks great. So I welcome the neighbors, I welcome the cooperation that everybody's shown here. And I'm just speaking behalf of, we'd just like to, based on our historical experience of losing some of our view to the house to the left that was taken back in the eighties. My parents didn't want to create any type of adverse situations with the neighbors. They just let it fly, but I, we're just trying to do the right thing. And I think everybody's on the right track, thank you.
Well, we appreciate it. And I think that you're going to find that the way that roof drops down, it's actually going to improve your view.
Yeah.
And then if we can take that down eighteen inches and the ridge line is roughly the same, I, I think it, it gets you a good solution to-
I, I think that's the answer.
Okay.
And I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you for the time. Anyone else?
I'll be dug down. Alfred Disco, Fifteenth Century Road. I'm sure the applicants are really nice people. I appreciate their working to do what they've done. The problem that I'm having is twofold. Number one, the maximum forty percent disturbance. I tried to find somewhere in the municipal code or in the background where that number came from or why it's there, what the point of it is. I, I think I know why it's there, however, I couldn't find anything. And it isn't a guideline from my understanding, unlike the building pad guidelines, which are, both of them are exceeded, as you noted. They, they exceed the building pad for number one and they exceed the building pad for, the proposed building pad for number two. Those are guidelines. It appears this forty percent disturbance is a much stronger number. And I, you know, I've seen in the past where they've allowed greater disturbances, but nothing like sixty-three and a half percent. And I'm at Fifteenth Century, I'm at the bottom of the cul-de-sac. And like a lot of properties in Rolling Hills, that's my only exit, access out. And my concern is and always will be on this particular lot, that nothing be done on this lot, which will create the potential for another poppy trail. We don't need that. And so if this forty percent disturbance really means something, and it's not just something that's just constantly waved and we don't really care about it, so then that's the case, why bother? Why not, why not, why even have it in there? Sixty-three and a half, this is a, I looked to see what the grade was on this property. I couldn't find it anywhere where it was ever called out. As near as I could tell from the elevations, it's about an eighty-five foot drop, but that's my really rough estimate on spare, spare road down to the bottom in Century. Couldn't figure out what, what that translated into in grade or slope, slope. You know, it just seems to me that rather than designing this project to fit the property, what they're doing is they're changing the property to fit the design. And I understand why they're doing it, what, the points that they're making and the issues and the reason, the reasoning behind all of this. But it just seems to me that, you know, there, there's, there was a reason the original house was the size it was and the way it was oriented. And, and I suspect the reason was exactly what I'm talking about. They didn't want to disturb the land excessively. And definitely didn't want to exceed, who knows back in the fifties what the maximum disturbance was or even if they had a maximum disturbance. But that's my concern here. And, and I don't think I'm the only one, I'm just the, I'm just, I'm just a guy getting up here, being the bad guy, okay? So I'm, I'm pretty sure there, that there's a concern by all my neighbors in Central Road.
Okay, well, we appreciate you showing up. We can't talk for the others that may or may not have a concern. I will tell you though, the, the good news is, is that building standards have changed. This goes through the county of Los Angeles, their engineers look at it. They look at drain water running off the property, it, it all gets done. So actually, at the end of the day, having a new building above you versus an old building above you is going to be a big plus for you. But thank you for your time. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jen Lukic. I don't think we met last time, but nice to see the others I met.
I mean, you're the homeowner?
I am the homeowner, I'm the applicant, yes. My husband can't be, he's traveling. But one I want to thank Luis and Dan and Stephanie and John working with us. We did hear your concerns. I think we addressed all of the concerns. And I, I hear you chip with the eighteen inches, I would fight for my view also. So I totally understand that and we are absolutely okay dropping the house eighteen inches to alleviate their concerns. What I, what I need tonight though is we need to move forward. It's costing us time and lots of money to keep redoing these plans and building frames. And we'd like to move forward. So like, I would like to move, leave here with an approval and to work with Stephanie on what we need to do to finalize that eighteen inch drop. But we're, we are ready to get going, so, and not spend more money on framing out the house. I'm here to ask for an approval since we have, I think we have alleviated your concerns.
Well, thank you, we do appreciate you listening and trying to help with, with, with the concerns that were expressed, so, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
You will, you will love it here, Rolling Hills is a special place.
We're excited.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so seeing no one else wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing portion and let's talk.
I'm not sure the disturbance percentages are right, but we can set that aside. I was just matching it to, to what we have here and lot disturbance versus building pad percentage. Anyway, I appreciate the homeowner and the architect coming back with the plan they presented today at the field trip. And then again, the seizing that addressed the concerns we had. Wasn't really talked about, but there's a significant reduction in the pad by getting rid of the pavilion area. So that reduced the amount of, of cut and fill that was necessary to kind of build that pad out. So while I appreciate them doing that, the neighbors' new concerns about the eighteen inch addition to the height of the peak of the roof, I understand that too. I think the, the view as it's presented today is better than it was previously when the original house was there. That being said, it sounds like Dan suggested that, you know, moving down eighteen would still be worthwhile for the applicant. So what I would recommend is that we put together something that we can approve that keeps the third bay in the garage, the reduction of the pavilion area, and then kind of resetting the, the pad fill back to that mark of eight feet, you know, the reduction of eighteen inches and get it moving forward. I remember, I forget who it was, but one of the neighbors came in the last meeting and said, you know, looks good like it, we can't wait to get this eyesore fixed up and, and built into a nice new beautiful home. And I think that would be beneficial to the entire neighborhood to get that accelerated and moving forward. So anything that we can do to address that tonight, I think would be worthwhile.
Great, thank you.
I agree with Sean on everything he said, definitely. My thoughts exactly.
Great, thank you. Greg?
Ditto, and I think we did comment on the disturbance percentage. One thing that was pointed out early in the, in the day, Stephanie, I think you addressed it, was the lot is just over an acre. So you touch that lot, the percentage goes skyrocketing. And so, you know, if you had a six acre lot, it'd be under ten percent. You know, in this way, it, it ends up being that. So we understand that, we see that, and it's already disturbed and, and you calm that down. So I appreciate that. I think as long as we address the eighteen inches, even if that impacts the, we've got a little leeway, because I hope Dan's correct in that it won't just, but it will change some of the percentages. And I think we just have to recognize that, but I think that could be easily done. So I agree with Sean relative to trying to get this moving forward. Good point, and not your fault that we didn't have a quorum last month. And so, and that's realistic to ask and try, because monthly cost are monthly costs. So I, I agree, I'd love to push it forward somehow.
So I'll jump in here. I, I agree pretty much with what everything has been said. I, I, I thank you for working with us and, and trying to resolve it. I apologize, I was not here last meeting, so this was my first time on site. After walking it, looking at it, not only does dropping it down eighteen inches help the view of the neighbors, but that, I mean, that's one of the big issues, but I, I think that by dropping it eighteen inches, it works better on the site. You'll have a better usable yard. You'll have a better house. So I think, I think it's a win-win, and I think it solves a lot of, a lot of issues that you would have. It was very helpful to hear that we're not going to be increasing the size of walls, and retaining walls, and, and things like that. So, um, I, I, I want to push it ahead. So I guess I, I look to council to tell us what we need to do here to try to make that happen, knowing that we're making some modifications to the resolution that's been prepared.
So we, because we have a resolution in front of us, we're looking at reverting one part of that back to a prior proposal, the eighteen inch, uh...
Dropping it down.
Yeah.
Clearer language to modify, and just, we need to be specific as to the language that you're modifying within the resolution.
So I guess, I, I'm not trying to get ahead of ourselves, because obviously we haven't taken a vote, we haven't approved anything, but if that's the direction we go, how do we go about doing it, and how does, I'm assuming he's going to make the resolution to make that happen?
So you would make a motion to approve with a modification to the resolution as to language? We'd have to look at the resolution where that language is, but, um, with it, dropping it down eighteen inches, um, the roof line dropped down eighteen inches. And that will be clear enough that then administratively, we can modify the resolution, and it can be approved.
Okay, perfect.
Is it a ridge line? Is that the correct wording, the ridge?
Ridge line, or the entire pad, or the finished floor level of the house?
Yes, the ridge line, and then the architect would take that ridge line and do his dimensions from there. So I think it'd be simple to say ridge line, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, would that involve also dropping the pad down, back down?
There's a couple things...
Or shrink the house, but that'll be cued off.
I mean, it just seems like the intent is really to, to lower the, the ridge line. I mean, we, we can say that, you know, that they needed to lower the finished floor level down eighteen inches, assuming that the ridge and the pitch and everything is going to remain the same. Everything else dropped down eighteen inches as well. If, if they went back and, say, uh, RHA had them changed around the architecture, I mean, had a steeper pitch or something, then that would, they'd lower down the finished floor, but then the roof line might be taller.
But you, you bring a valid point. The ridge needs to come down with the pad.
We may want to reopen the public hearing, just so that, um, the applicant can speak to what they would need to do.
Okay. We will reopen it. Would love to hear what you have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, just if I may, stating that we're dropping the pad eighteen inches, which everything is going to go with it. All the ridge lines, all the pad elevations. I think that's simple. We just say drop the elevation of the pad eighteen inches, and all the ridges eighteen inches.
Perfect.
I think that'll cover.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Wright. Okay, I'm going to close that again. So the public hearing is closed.
Chair Shell? Yes, sir. I can try to draft out some language that we can include as a condition, and maybe Scott can help me out. I could read it out. If we had a condition saying that the applicant shall lower the, the building pad elevation by eighteen inches, and then development plan shall be reviewed and approved by the city prior to plant check submittal, something of that nature.
I do think, though, that the language that he said, that the, the whole thing comes down, needs to be incorporated in there as well. I don't want to drop it eighteen inches, and then they've got vaulted ceilings, because they left it where it was.
I agree.
He just said, uh, uh, floor level, but in addition to ridge heights.
All the ridges.
All the ridges. So we worked that into it, I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, so not just saying it's building pad, but finished floor elevation and the ridge line. Right, okay.
What was the second part?
Um, development plan shall be reviewed and approved by the city prior to plant check submittal.
Staff, well, you might say city staff.
City staff. Or you could say planning department.
I think I've got it, if you're ready, Chair.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution two zero two four dash zero three, with the following amendment: Dropping the elevation of the building pad eighteen inches, and all associated ridges eighteen inches. And in addition, development plan shall be reviewed by city staff before submittal.
Second. Should we do roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Cardenas?
Approved.
Commissioner Douglas?
Approved.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Chair Shell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
May, may I just ask a clarification?
Yes.
So when the notice changed or the disturbance upgraded as a result of that, that's something we can work with staff, when it, we don't have to come back with that revision?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, new public hearings. This is zoning case number twenty-three dash one fifty. This is for Two Possum Ridge Road. John, are you going to give us the overview on this one?
Sure. One second. The item for you is zoning case number twenty-three dash one fifty. It's for site plan review, conditional use permit, and variance for the property at Two Possum Ridge Road. The property is located in the center part of the city of Rolling Hills, shown right over there where the, uh, yellow star is located. The intersection of Portuguese Bend Road and Crest Road East. This shows the city map of the subject property, shown in yellow, property lines. You have Portuguese Bend Road on the east side of the subject property, Crest Road west on the south side, and as you can see, Possum Ridge Road traverses the property right down the middle. There's an easement for Ro- Rolling Hills Community Association. That's maintained by the community association. But that is private property, um, and so that road doesn't bisect the property into two separate parts. The property is zone RES two. The net lot area is three point five acres, one hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred ninety square feet. The existing residence was constructed in nineteen forty-nine. According to building records, uh, there's been some additions and other structures built on, in, in later years, with significant improvements done in the nineteen seventies. Currently, it's, the property is developed with eight buildings and a generator. The, um, property has a main residence, which is three thousand six hundred sixty square feet. Originally was built as a seventeen hundred square foot building back in nineteen forty-nine. It had an attached nine hundred square foot garage, as well as some open porches. There's an extension to the main residence, and it's connected with a breezeway that was possibly added around nineteen seventy-five or nineteen seventy-eight, based on building records. There's an eight hundred eighty-four square foot addition that was built in nineteen seventy-five, a thousand square foot addition, and remodel that same year, and a ninety-six square foot addition to the master bedroom, and a four hundred forty square foot addition to the family room back in nineteen seventy-eight. The building permits are a little bit convoluted, but you, you can kind of tell that a lot of work was done in that, that, that range in the nineteen seventies. The detached garage building, which is about eight hundred ninety square feet, was built in nineteen seventy-five. There's also a farm equipment garage shop, built that same year, which is about eight hundred eighty-four square feet. The stable and loft, we have a permit from nineteen ninety-four for eighteen hundred ninety square feet. There are two detached storage sheds, one built in nineteen fifty-four. That's a hundred twenty square foot use, square feet, use of the garden storage. And another one built in nineteen seventy-five, that's three hundred square feet, use of the hobby room. The enclosed cabana, uh, is shown as two twenty-five square feet. Um, and again, there's a lot of built permits in there, so it's, it's kind of tough to actually know exactly what the permits, um, are located without having to, you know, do the research. And there's also a transformer generator that's on the property. In terms of the summaries needed for approval, there's a site plan review application before you. That's for an addition of two thousand five hundred seventy square feet to the existing residence for a total of six thousand two hundred thirty square feet. There's also nine hundred eighty square feet of attached covered porches, a nineteen hundred fifty square foot basement divided into two areas, a six hundred forty square foot attached garage, which is actually the existing garage, cutting off one stall space and attaching that detached garage to the rest of the house. And so the overall total would be about nine eight hundred square feet. The height of the residence would be eighteen feet nine inches. Behind the residence is a twelve hundred square foot swimming pool. There's also a hundred seventy square foot outdoor kitchen in that area, and a three hundred thirty-five square foot fire pit located next to the swimming pool. The applicant is also looking to expand the driveway width from about eighteen feet to twenty feet, and also increase the motor court to thirty-two feet. There will be a planer area that has a tree in the middle of the motor court. Also included in the application, there's landscaping. There's screening trees along Crest Road, and there's also vineyards and orchards located on the property. There's also a, uh, conditional use permits required for the stable and corral. The stable total would be five thousand one hundred forty-six square feet. The stable height will be twenty-six feet, uh, sorry, twenty-three feet six inches. And the sports court will be forty-six hundred square feet. The fence height will be ten feet. There's also a viewing area that's about twelve feet wide that goes around the south and west part of the tennis court, um, covering an area of about twenty-two hundred square feet. The variances for the project include, one, to encroach into the front and rear yard setbacks. The northern portion of the existing residence already encroaches into the front yard setback, so that any additions to that portion would also encroach. Portions of the farm equipment, the garage shop building, will encroach into the rear yard setback. And because that portion's being changed to the, the stable, um, the stable, there's, there's a variance required for that as well. The setback for the stable is twenty-five feet from the rear property line, and a portion of that building already encroaches in there. The swimming pool, which is proposed, will encroach into the fifty-foot rear yard setback. The sports court located on the east side of Possum Ridge Road encroaches into both the front and rear yard setbacks, and the applicant is claiming hardship due to, to the configuration of the property being traversed by Possum Ridge Road. In terms of coverage, disturbance, and grading, this is included in the staff report, but the structural lot coverage will be twenty, twelve point five percent, which is under the twenty percent maximum allowed. The flat work, they are adding to the driveway and motor court. That will, you know, increase the total flat work to fourteen thousand square feet, nine, nine point two percent. That also includes, um, tenants' court area. Total lot coverage, which is structural and flat work, is thirty-five percent maximum. They're going to be at twenty-one point seven percent total disturbed area. They're just about at that forty percent maximum, being at thirty-nine point eight percent. Um, in terms of the residential building pads for pad one, the main residence residential building pad, and the sports court, which is pad two, those are guidelines, which is thirty percent. The residential building pad will be about that, that area, twenty-nine point nine percent, but the sports court will be at eighty-two percent. In terms of the issues of concern discussed in the staff report, the project is a redevelopment of the entire property, and I'll get into that a little bit. There are some issues with the stables that I'll, I'll talk about, as well as the swimming pool, the basement, sports court, driveway, and the landscaping and privacy. So in terms of the property, this shows the property here. Again, it's three point five acres. The property lines are shown there in the red. And the street easements are located there in the green. You have Possum Ridge that traverses the property right down the middle. You also have Portuguese Bend Road on the east side. Your front yard setbacks are along Possum Ridge Road there. There's a fifty-foot front yard setback on, um, the west side, and a fifty-foot front yard setback on the east side. There are rear yard setbacks located in those areas, and everything else is side yard setbacks. So your actual buildable area, where you wouldn't have to have a variance, would be located in that center portion there, outside of the setback areas. So you can see portions of the proposed swimming pool and, uh, the barn are located in the setback area. The actual setback for the, the barn is twenty-five feet, so a little portion of that does encroach into that twenty-five feet. In terms of the sports court, you can see that it does encroach into the front yard setback, as well as the rear yard setback. In terms of grading, they're proposing twenty-seven hundred cubic yards of cut, twenty-three hundred cubic yards of fill, for a total of about five thousand cubic yards. And they're also looking to export four hundred and twenty-eight cubic yards of exempt grading, which is, will be used for the swimming pool and for the basement. The blue areas show the areas of, uh, cut. The red areas are the areas of, uh, fill. In terms of the proposed project for the residence, um, again, it is a one-story building. Our code only allows one-story buildings for residences. We noticed that there was an area there showing as a storage area loft, that's part of the, the residence. This shows a little bit more of the detail. And one issue is just being, really calling that an attic, six-foot-high ceiling, instead of seven feet, and not allowing a direct access with a staircase, uh, which is shown on plan. That'll have to be removed, and they can have a access ladder leading to that attic space. In terms of the swimming pool and the basement, there's an area between the swimming pool. The top part shows the plan view. Swimming pool is located in this area. The house is located in that area. Um, below the house in this portion is the, the basement. And between the basement and swimming pool, you have this area there where the pool equipment will be located. On the bottom, shows a section of that area. This portion here is the house. Down below, you have the wine cellar and storage in the basement. And attached to that is that pool equipment between, um, between the swimming pool. We do have a concern about that, because that actually becomes a, a basement that's outside of the footprint of our, uh, of the residence. And our code requires any basement space be underneath the footprint of the house. So this shows a, a close-up of the basement area of that pool equipment area. And this right here shows the basement footprint. So everything we're, um, within that blue line to the right is underneath the footprint of the building. You can see that pool equipment kind of daylighting out on the outside. There's a little, there's a door, uh, doorway there that leads to the outside, so that actually becomes an extension of that basement, um, outside of that footprint. So we are recommending that the pool equipment actually be relocated somewhere else, where it can be accessed, um, pretty easily by the pool cleaner, um, on the outside. Otherwise, the pool cleaner would have to go inside the house and down the staircase, down to the basement in order to do maintenance on the pool equipment. In terms of the stable, these are the elevations, um, shown. The, the top left is the rear of the stable. Bottom right is the front elevation, as seen from the driveway. I'll talk about a, a little bit more of that later, and then you have two sides. It currently is two stories for the stable. What they're looking to do is really expand that out, so that they have a tack room, uh, on the second floor. And they're also looking to level out the stable with the existing, um, garage equipment storage room in that area. Height of the stable will be twenty-six, twenty-three and a half feet. The size is five thousand one hundred forty-six square feet. That loft area is fifteen hundred seventy-one square feet, with a seven hundred seventy-eight square foot tack room. So this is a close-up of the front elevation. Again, the total height will be, is twenty-three feet six inches. When we went out there, you can tell that the grade elevation was different between the stable and the garage area. What they're going to be doing is really leveling out the stable area. They'll have to be doing some cut there to, to level it out, make that one, um, flat surface. Uh, I also wanted to point out that they are also enclosing the turnout area here on the left. Again, they are, they are attaching the stable to the other building over here, which is the use of the main storage. And there is a little bit of a breezeway between the proposed barn and that storage shed on the side. In terms of the loft area and the ground floor, this shows the plans. So on the, on the left, you have the loft on the second floor. There's going to be a staircase going up to the existing area. That area that's crosshatched will be the new loft area, use as a tack room, and there's a space open to below. And on the right, you have the ground floor. The area that's crosshatched is all the new area. The area that's white is the existing building and the existing barn. And, uh, again, this is a turnout area. Currently, it's open. And, uh, again, this is a turnout area, area currently it's open, um, but roofed and they're looking to enclose that and turn it into the storage area. We did have a concern about this area over here because there's a bathroom, um, leading into that storage area. And then according to our code, you can have a bathroom inside the tack room, but not just by its own into the storage, so that, that would have to be addressed. We were asked to provide a comparison of existing stables that were approved by the city. And so this is a list here. It's not included in the staff report, um, but you can see that in terms of size, the high is about thirty-six hundred square feet, thirty-seven hundred square feet over at Seventy-Seventh Crest Road East. The low is about two hundred and thirty-nine square feet over at Meadowlark. And in terms of height, you have a low that's about eleven feet over at Seventy-four Portuguese, Portuguese Bend Road and a high that's about twenty-five feet over Eight Kilometers Road North. Uh, there is a cup, a cupola on that at seven feet tall, so if you count that, the actual height is thirty-two feet. That building is, has been approved, it's not been built yet. There's an existing building there that they're looking to add on, uh, but the planning commission has recently approved an extension of time for that project. So summarizing that table, the, the average of the barns that we looked at are about fifteen hundred eighty square feet. Average height's about eighteen and a half feet. Again, your high is about thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred square feet. The height is thirty-two when you include that cupola. And the low is two hundred and thirty-nine square feet with a high, uh, at eleven feet. The proposal over to Possum Ridge Road is five thousand one hundred forty-six square feet and the height is about twenty-three and a half feet. In terms of the driveway, the applicant is looking to expand the driveway off of Possum Ridge Road. Currently, it's about eighteen feet. They're adding to add about two feet there to make it twenty feet wide. And they're also looking to expand the motor court area, which is about thirty-two feet around that center tree planter. So that gives you access over to the garage, which will be a two-car garage. It also provides access to the stable. Um, there is a condition that the stable access be no more than, uh, between, between six feet and twelve feet. So no, no smaller than six feet, no larger than twelve feet. It also needs to be permeable or of a, of a roughened surface. The sports court located on the east side of Possum Ridge Road, um, they are proposing, um, grading in excess of the maximum, seven hundred fifty cubic yards. That could be addressed because they do have this viewing area that's about twelve feet wide that goes around the, uh, this is kinda turned around though, but this is actually the west side. This is more of a south side. So it's twelve foot wide there. So if they got rid of that, they can actually be under that maximum, uh, grading limitation. They are proposing a fence that's gonna be ten feet high. I asked for, uh, oh, and, and a six-foot walkway maximum, leading from the tennis court to the, uh, Possum Ridge. We recommend that that be included with some obstacles so that it's not for vehicular access. Otherwise, any vehicular driveway would have to be approved by the traffic commission. And in terms of landscaping, this is turned around, but you have Crest Road on the, the left, Possum Ridge Road, uh, right through the property, north is on, north is towards the, the right. They are proposing a vineyard on the east side as well as an orchard. And behind the residence, you have a vineyard there down, uh, down the slope. You have a little play area here north of the residence. And the applicant is also proposing some screening trees along Crest Road, uh, west. There is a requirement, RHA doesn't allow any new landscaping along their, uh, road easements. And so the applicant will have to work that out with the, uh, association before they can plant anything within that easement. Terms of community, communications, we published this in the Daily Breeze on March seventh. Notices were also sent to residents with a thousand feet of the subject property. We did receive an email from Amanda Hu from Eight, Eight Possum Ridge Lane, which is included in the supplemental, blue folder. The concerns there include a roof line for the residence and the stable, uh, access during construction. There isn't any parking on Possum Ridge, so they need to figure out where the construction workers are gonna park once it's under construction, most likely along Crest Road or on the property. And also for drainage for the tennis court and pool, there are concerns that wa- additional impermeable surface would cause, uh, stormwater runoff to go down the street onto the lower property where, uh, Ms. Hu is located. In terms of the environmental review, we find the project is categorically exempt, subject to section one-five-three-zero-three, class, class three of the California Environmental Quality Act. It's per construction of a single-family residence or accessory structures. And our recommendation is that the planning commission open the public hearing, take public testimony and provide directions to staff and the applicant. We did include a resolution there as part of the staff report in case the planning commission does decide to approve the project with certain conditions as discussed. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
John, thank you very much. Very, very informative. Uh, any questions from the planning commission?
I, what about screening, um, for the sports court? For landscaping stuff?
Yeah, so there is a requirement that sports courts do, do be screened and they are providing screening in that, um, this doesn't show the details though, but we did have the landscape plan, the conceptual landscape plan reviewed by our, uh, consultant, our landscape consultant for proper, you know, planting, making sure there's, there's no invasive species or making sure that tree heights aren't, aren't really tall.
You're, John, you have areas of concern and did that list all the variances? There seems like there's a few here, so I just didn't, you usually kinda guide us with a list of variances so we can address each one separately and there's, there's a lot going on, on this project, so I'm a little confused.
Yeah, there are, there is a lot definitely with this project. I mean, you have additions going on to the house or basically connecting some of the buildings and making it one structure, one building. They're also doing that with the, the barn, making it one barn, connecting two buildings together. But in terms of variances, it's really, you have a front yard because of Possum Ridge going right down the middle. That creates two front yards, one on the, this turned around again, with one on the west side and one on the east side, both fifty feet wide. And then you have the variances, uh, for the rear yard setbacks on the east and west.
Okay. Any question?
We're not taking up the, uh, tree issue along the street because that's in the...
That's on the side street.
We need to take it up on Crest.
Okay. So. Any other questions for John? Okay, thank you, John. Much appreciated. Uh, at this point in time, I'm gonna open up to the public. If you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
Megan Campbell, I'm an architect. Um, trying to make a reservation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I need, I need to set up.
Okay.
You can quiet her also.
All right. Thank you for taking the time to review this project. I know there's a lot of moving bits and pieces. It's very complicated, so hopefully we can break it down into manageable chunks and find a path forward. So, uh, this is arguably one of the, uh, most visible corners in all of Rolling Hills. Um, and it's been a very, um, equestrian-facing, uh, property with the stable and, um, the corral right on, on the corner there where you could see horses and stuff in the past. Um, so we do, we do wanna keep it that way. We wanna keep it, um, very, uh, horse-friendly. Um, but we do wanna provide, uh, some privacy for the new homeowners because you're kinda in a fishbowl there with no trees, no screening, um, and also, you know, be, be mindful of impacts to neighbors. Um, and I think because the house is sitting so far lower than Crest itself and then all the neighbors are thirty feet higher to their finished floor, it really, th- the view impacts are to the property itself. Um, you're not gonna be able to stare down into his backyard anymore. Um, so I, I, uh, don't believe that the raising of the ridge height of the house, um, has any view impacts and we were really mindful of that when we, uh, designed it out. So the first part, uh, the house, um, I think the house is kind of a straightforward part of the project. Um, we're connecting the three separate buildings, um, into one. There's currently a breezeway that connects the two, so just filling in that wall, it's really not adding mass to the front of the house. Um, and then we're not adding any additions to the front and coming further into the setback than it already is. Um, all the additions are in between the breezeways or in the back of the house. Um, there's a portion on the right-hand side there that is, uh, currently in the front setback and the addition on the backside of the house is still in the front setback. So that's, shows how much it's into the front setback already. Um, and yeah, connecting, connecting the structures, um, they have a small family now. They're growing it, um, so making it usable and, and having that connected garage too is really important. Um, so the basement, I know John touched on it. Um, the mechanical room, we've already worked through moving it, detaching it from the basement itself, so all the basement will be below the building envelope. Um, we're not trying to ask for any variances on the mechanical room and pool equipment. We'll relocate it, it'll shrink. Um, the, there's the two basements, uh, one has, is completely under the house and the other one has a light well access, um, for life safety. Um, and then the, here, let me start flipping through. So I, I brought, um, some pictures to show some of the view impacts, um, from across Crest. Um, so this is standing up in front of, uh, the water tower that's there. Um, so you can see any of the addition, these lines here are, um, drawn over the silhouette lines. Um, and you can see the shaded addition portions really doesn't change any of the view. Um, it just makes it so you can't see into the backyard right here. And then here's the front of the house. Um, we're keeping, um, this portion at the same height. We're not raising the ridge at all, uh, as it goes along the street here. Um, and then each of the ridge heights, we're essentially expanding the, um, floor area and just connecting the ridge height following the existing roof line. So if we did want to drop the roof height, um, we'd either have to completely, uh, re-roof it and change the roof pitch, um, or drop the floor, which is not gonna work because it's an existing house. So that, that roof line's pretty set for the main house. The stable, uh, onsite, I, I know there are concerns about the stable. Um, and we are open to hearing all of the comments and, and prepared to come back with some other options. Um, we, we've talked about all sorts of different options with it. It's kinda tough because the stable, we want it to be located in this direction, um, and right now it's, it's facing this way, so it kinda digs back into that hill in a way that makes it, um, harder to access. And then it's just connecting this garage to the stable. So yes, it's a lot of square footage, but it's combining the use of this equipment storage garage and the stable. So it's all gonna be agricultural, equestrian uses, um, just connecting the assets. Um, oh, and then, uh, one other thing is we're pulling this back and demoing this one garage, um, because to have the thirty-five foot setback between the stable and the garage. So that's why we're pulling the house back in that direction. Um, and then the trees. Um, so we definitely need to have some planting, um, so anyone walking along Crest cannot just peer down into his entire property. We came with a, uh, eight-foot, um, ask and I think the minimum we could go is six-foot because that's eye height. Um, so, I mean, this is, this is our eight-foot line here and you can see where it intersects the house. All you're losing is a view of the house. Like, there's still the, the roof that's gonna impact the view that's higher, um, from a sightline. And, uh, the last thing, I don't have a picture of it, um, but the court, uh, we've looked at different options for it, also open to comments and, and, um, and we did find an option that we could rotate it and get it out of the setback, um, but it would require more grading. So how we located it was the flattest natural space on the site. Um, we looked at various, uh, options on the site and some of the other ones that were suggested to us, um, right up here, there's a nice flat area, um, but that is , uh, twofold, it's, um, well, threefold, future stable, front yard and extremely visible from the public, um, just as, you know, an eyesore factor. Um, and then down below the court, or down below the house, um, would require a lot of grading. And then, uh, it's also very close adjacent to, uh, the neighbors, so the sound concerns. Um, so then the, the spot that we did locate it, it was the least amount of grading, the furthest away from neighbors, sunken down, there's existing screening already there, so you can barely see it. Um, and once we put the new screening, um, we're hoping that it will be completely, uh, Any questions or should I pass it along to...
Any questions?
Hook on the pool equipment, you were gonna relocate it out of that one area. I kinda like, I, I didn't find the idea of it being inside something so it's not visible, but on the other side...
It's still gonna be below grade.
Okay, but just on the other side of the pool or...
But it's not connected from the exterior. Yeah. Yeah, we're thinking, um, kinda tucked behind the fire pit and then have an access from the fire pit area. So then he was right with the servicing, you don't want them walking through the house, so, um, being able to access it there.
You can't have a basement unless it's under the house too, so that's why they have to move it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Who else?
Okay, I'll go. Hi, everybody. Interested in wondering what Darty would think about my design, or all of our design.
Can you do me a favor? Can you state your name?
Yeah, I'm Doug Whitcomb. I'm the owner. Sorry, guys. Uh, pleasure to meet you all again today. Um, sorry, I'm not great with speeches, uh, so, but I did have to write it down, so apologize. Okay, here he is. Okay. Good evening. Uh, thank you commissioners for being here and for your time this morning and diligent work preserving our beautiful city. Uh, that's my wife Heather. Uh, our eight-month-old son Jack is home with our parents and four-month-old, uh, son Jamison is still in the works. Uh, I will keep this fairly short. I just wanted everyone to know it's been a dream of mine to be here in front of all of you designing what we have today, our dream home and property. I have put a considerable amount of time and thought into creating something I thought you folks would be proud to display and most importantly, what Darty Cronin would be proud to look at from above. As you all know, he was a well-known figure in Rolling Hills. He loved his horses, as do we. He loved his land probably more than anyone and we truly feel we have created something he is smiling down and proud to look at today. We're only caretakers of what we have on earth and I plan to be the best caretaker of what I'm blessed to have during my time here. Anyways, my wife and I, as you can imagine, have a lot going on and I hope that what we have presented is something that could be approved tonight with conditions. We wanna get this done as smoothly and quickly as possible. I think what we have created is an exemplary home and stable, uh, really showcasing all the facets of our great community. We try to be respectful of our neighbors and their views, as we know that is incredibly important to maintain. I thank each one of you for being here and, uh, you're thoughtful and continue to work at our city. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Dan Bolton with Bolton Engineering on behalf of the applicant. I wanna echo Megan and Doug's appreciation of your time and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Ha and I live at Eight Possum Ridge Road. I grew up in Rolling Hills, my family home is at one Crest Road east. So we looked at this corner growing up, walking by it. And now I am the proud mom of two little kids, my son Theo's three and my daughter's twenty-one months. And we, we now live at Eight Possum Ridge. I did notice that the height of the home did seem quite high. And while the architect did mention that they looked at it from a thirty-foot across the street, from the street view, it really does block a lot of the view. The other issue that I was mentioning in my supplement that I had sent over was the drainage issue. I am a little bit concerned because right now, just from this past season, there was already a lot of rain coming down and we don't really have a lot of structural drainage there. And there was already, there's already erosion happening across the street. And my last concern was the construction and access to our home. Just this past year, one of our neighbors had blocked our driveway. I was trying to take my son to urgent care and could not leave my house because of how narrow the street is already. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we will have easy access to our home because this does seem like a very extensive project. So I'm not sure where the access would be. Even from Four Possum Ridge, there's been a lot of work going on there and we've been stuck behind trucks for up to thirty or more minutes because they could not move them out of the road. And in terms of adding screening around the property, right now, even the bushes that are existing, we have to drive around them because they haven't been maintained and have, you know, we could basically have to drive off the street in order to avoid it. So we just wanna be, you know, cognizant of maintaining the integrity of our community, why we all chose to live here and making sure that, you know, all our families can enjoy the beauty of Rolling Hills. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time to hear our concerns. And yeah, obviously renovating is wonderful, but we just wanna make sure that it's safe for everybody on our street since it really is a one-way in, one-way out. Because the fire truck's already having issues kind of getting access to our home. So, you know, this does bring up a lot of concerns in those regards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so seeing none, I will close the public section for now and Sean, who'd like to start?
So appreciate you guys putting this thoughtful plan together. There's a lot of stuff in here and I gotta touch on a couple of things that just kinda stuck out with me. The first thing that you notice is coming on the property is that silhouette for the sports court. Very visible and even with screening, you'd be able to see it from Crest and Portuguese Bend. Ten-foot-high fence, and again, even screened at ten or more, you're still gonna see that sitting out in the middle of the pasture, essentially. So I'm challenged with that and I, I don't know, I was looking at the, the plan, trying to think of a way to put that in a different location or somewhere where it wasn't as visible. Haven't come up with that solution yet. I was concerned about the pool equipment being in a basement outside of the house footprint, but that's being remediated, so not an issue. I don't have a problem with the basement. The heights, I, I know there are plate height restrictions with the community association. I don't know if we deal with that, but is, is there any issue with plate heights?
Yeah, there might be with the community association, I know there's some for building and safety as well. But our code says that you can only have a one-story building for the residents.
Got it. So that may come into play because having that six-foot-high attic space, again, may run afoul, but if we don't have a requirement for that, then there won't be attention to it. There's a shed on the end of the barn in the setback that you said may or may not be permitted. I understand the barn is encroaching in the setback. In the barn setback, not in the regular setback, but the, that other structure is, is beyond the barn in the setback. So there's a question as to whether that was.
Yeah, they're gonna leave that as is.
There's a question as to whether that was permitted or not. So I think you're gonna peek into that and see if that was part of what was approved. The barn itself, as a horse owner and barn person, I love the idea of having big barns. I think the, the challenge is the second story on both the barn and the utility or ag storage space, you know, connecting them into essentially more than a barn. And so I, I'm having a hard time with justifying a barn that's L-shaped and then has additional, what's being called tack room space above both the barn and the ag storage. So a little challenge with that. The pool, you know, the, I thought it was an interesting location for it as opposed to more on the southerly, southerly side of the property. But if the, if the cut and fill works for it, and it sounded like the, it was gonna be a spillover infinity of, you know, three feet or so. If that's the case, if we're not doing a massive six-foot wall on the edge of it, I can, I can get around it and it's, it's tucked in behind the house, so. I don't know that anyone would see that, the, the backside of the pool. It's the west side of the property. But a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff to take in. And I think one of my, my biggest concerns is around the, the view of the sports court in a very visible area of the lot and the city in general.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's my concern too, is the sports court and just having it out there in that pasture where we're used to seeing the horses and, and everything. Also, I thought about this morning, the neighbors' access while it's under construction too and all of that. Cuz I could see where it could be an issue. And those are really my two concerns.
I assume with any proposal, we can put a provision in there that all construction parking would be on Crest or on-site. Pretty easily, right?
Yeah, we can add a provision.
I'm okay with the house, the expansion. Ridge height, I was okay, hearing the neighbor, takes a great point that she has a different view. She drives by it every day going both ways through the street. So I think that's important. I, I don't have an answer, but I think it's something to be raised. I, I don't think this is the first or last time we're gonna look at this. So I think we have to consider several things, but there is something about what Sean talked about, about plate height relative. I grew up in a house here that had a six-foot-tall attic. I liked it, it was fun, kids, it's more room, I kinda like that idea. I currently have it in my house now too. So I get that, as long as it's not, it's not blocking anybody's view. So I, I think I'm okay with that. Regard, the garage to reduce for the barn. Similarly, I just, the barn is so large and it's neat that it's a nice big and it's been there forever and I drive by it every day. And I think just expanding it to the north just made it even larger. And I, I think that's what I had the heartache about is it just takes a massive structure, particularly from Crest, and just expands it. So it's a little tough for me to understand why that was necessary from a room standpoint. The two sheds on the side, I just didn't like because it was just more structures. I get it, storage, I'd rather have storage than things left outside. It seems like throughout the barn, particularly with two barns, so to speak, and even though you combine them, you would have plenty of storage. But I'd have to look at if it's legal in the setback and it's kinda grandfathered in. I guess I'd be okay with it. I'd like to see maybe one of them removed, just to, one less structure from that standpoint. Trees and hedges, to be frank with you, it's just not the flavor of Rolling Hills. We just don't have that kind of screening. It's, it's because we're so open and you've got one of the larger lots, to look down on it has actually been a benefit over the years. I get it from a privacy, I'm at a corner, I totally understand that. And we don't have anything taller than our three-ring fence and so people are looking at our yard. It's a good thing and a bad thing. But you're right that the architect had a great point. This is probably the premier intersection in the entire city, you think about that. And you've got pretty nice neighbors mostly, particularly where you grew up. And, and obviously some challenges with a couple of the other corners going on right now. But this is your right premier and it's really visible. And I think that the good news is it's not right on Crest. And so you can, particularly with the landscaping of the yard, it's just, it was so neat with the old resident there with the horses and both sides of the pastures, it just was quintessential Rolling Hills. Which when I get to the sport court, I'll just be frank, and I'm more of a sport court guy than a horse guy, but I just can't see a sport court in the, in that corner of that lot, frankly, anywhere. It just doesn't fit. And I grew up here too. I just don't see that. And we had corrals all around us and, and again, I was not into the horses and I, I regret that in some ways cuz our buddies are so into it. But the sport court being right there is just so visible. I don't know how to get around that. I think it's gonna be something kinda creative from you coming around. Like Sean mentioned, maybe reorientate, look at that. I like the orchard, I don't mind the vineyard idea. I think though that understanding the quintessential idea of Rolling Hills is horses and pastures, I, I think we just have to be wary of that. So the drainage and the parking, the city and the county handle that, so I would trust that they know how to do that and that's beyond us here. Parking, great point, and obviously it's one of those thin streets. It's very different, every street from Buggy Whip all the way down to Quail Ridge, et cetera. They're all very different, Possum Ridge is one of the smaller streets. And make a good point, there shouldn't be any parking along Possum Ridge for anything. I, I know you guys would probably adhere to that too, whether it's parking even on the dirt for during construction to parking on Crest. So I think there's plenty of alternatives there to not block the road. Initial comments.
Okay, so I'll jump in. So first off, I, I wanna say that I know this is your dream and we're not sitting here trying to crush your dream. I was in your chair and the reason I'm here is cuz I didn't like what happened when I was here. My wife left in tears on multiple occasions. So this is a process that we are going to go through together and we're gonna try to make a better project out of it, right? And this is the first time you guys have come before us. So we're gonna throw a lot at you. And you can see that right now, it's not going to get, I mean, I'm a betting man and I'm one of five up here. It's not gonna get approved tonight, right? But this is a process that we're gonna work together, you're gonna work with staff and we're gonna try to make this a, a, a better project. So I, I don't wanna suck the life out of you because I had it sucked out of me and, and it was not a pleasant process. So I'm hopeful that as we go through this, we will end up with a better project and in the end, you, you will like it. But as everybody said, there is a lot going on, on this project. And, and I'm, I'm looking at it from a different angle, right? I'm looking at it with new eyes. And I look at this and unfortunately I see that you're letting boxes on this site dictate what you are doing, right? You don't like the location of the barn because it's going this way, but you wanna add it this way, okay? And, and I guess my point being is, at the end of the day, to modify some of these boxes, are you better off to start from scratch and get what you want, right? Now, like the sports court, everybody's saying that's not the location for a sports court. I'm gonna fight you tooth and nail on that sports court, okay? But if you took your barn and you put it over there, that would be spectacular, okay? And, and you would have a, a barn that you could design from scratch and then maybe we figure out a place on that side where you put your sports court, where your kids are playing, where you can keep a better eye on them. I, and again, I'm not trying to redesign your project, but you got, you got a lot going on, that barn is huge, you're adding to it. I see you frowning already and I'm sorry for it. But y, y, you know, as it's been said, and I'm gonna say it again, this is one of the premier corners in the whole city, right? And I love the olive trees and the vineyard and all of that. It's not necessarily Rolling Hills. We have a few people that have done it, but it's not Rolling Hills. I, I, I have no issue with the vineyards and I think it's great. I, I think there's a way to incorporate that. You know, as Greg said, the open feel to, to, to that is wonderful. And what we don't wanna do, we, we discourage hedges, we discourage closing it in and, and taking away that view and the openness. So I, I understand that you feel like you're in a fishbowl, but there's gotta be a happy medium to get you some privacy without closing it in and making it feel like Orange County, cuz we, we, we are not, right? The, the, the house, again, I, I don't know that I really have much problem. I would look at the ridge line a little bit, you've got a big attic up there, could it be brought down a little bit? I would look, as, as Sean said, I would look at the ridge plates because I think it's dictated next door that you're not gonna be able to get it too high. And obviously, the wider you go with it, the, the higher the ridge line has to, to be to get it there. But take a look at that, it's interesting, it looks much worse from Crest than when you're actually down there standing in front of the house. It, it, it's not as bad looking at it at your front door than it is. It, it looks massive looking down on it from Crest. The barn also looks massive, right? So those are the pieces of it. Your, 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 your pool, we can figure out the grading back there and, and try to figure that out. But again, I think you're letting these boxes dictate where you're having to put things, which is forcing your pool off the back. So it's, it's a lot more challenging to do a remodel than it is new construction because you're limited by these different pieces that you're now trying to work through. You know, widening the driveway, we have to do that because of the fire department. So I, I, I think between what all of us have said, that's kind of the input that we've got for you. You know, you've got Bolton here to help you try to figure out grading and all of that, there's nobody better. I mean, he, you saw how many times he's been up here tonight. Knows the city, city very well. Staff is here to support you and try to help you. We want you to get your house built, we want you to be a part of the city. Once you're in here, you, you, you will love it. It's, it's an amazing place to live. So I, I guess, I mean, we can take a vote and we can decide, you know, if we're gonna approve it or not. What we would recommend is that you, we, we hold it over till next meeting. And I may be getting ahead of myself here, but I think that's the direction it's going and give you guys a chance to take another whack at it, work with staff and let's figure out how we can massage this thing. I know time is money, we try to move it along as best we can. But there's just, I mean, the mass and the scale and, and all the buildings that are here and trying to pull them together, but still try to make it, you know. And I mean, like your garage, you're taking half of it away and you're taking half of the barn side away because it encroaches in everything else. There, there may be a better approach to solving some of these issues which maybe opens up more space on the house side versus the other side. So.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, again, I'm, we're not trying to suck the life out of you. We, 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 we.
You guys have, I really appreciate it.
We, we wanna work with you, we want you to get the best project we can. You know, when it comes to drainage, this all goes through. You know, when it comes to drainage, this all goes through the county. So it is going to be much better when it is done. The, the standards that new homes have to be held to is, is pretty impressive. So you're not gonna have issues off of this home. You may have because the street drops and you've got water running off of crest, but th- this is gonna be better when it's done than it is now. And I believe in our code that when somebody does a remodel, they're supposed to be able to park on site. So we can figure that piece of it out, so I, I know it's a challenging street, we can work with staff and we can figure that piece of it out. But I've said way more than I should have, but, but that's kind of putting, putting it all together, so.
Can I also add, I, I really appreciate your thoughtful speech letter, you know, wanting to keep the integrity and honoring the space and I thought that was lovely.
Oh, you was quite a character, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I, do I, what do I need to do here to hold it over to the next meeting?
Well, you might ask whether there's a motion and in particular whether there's a motion to continue the item to a date certain.
Okay.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue zoning case number two-three dash one-five-zero to, what's the date of next planning commission meeting?
April 16th.
To April 16th.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Hi, all opposed? Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Next one is zoning case number twenty-three-one-thirty-seven, this is for twenty-nine Eastfield.
Meeting's not over yet.
Hey, hey, I've lost control of my meeting! I got the mayor out there, the problem? Jeez! Unbelievable. Okay, would you give us an overview? Yeah, please, please give us.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm here to present twenty-nine Eastfield Drive. This is for zoning case number twenty-three dash one-three-seven. It's a site plan review and a variance. Subject property is actually located in the RAS one zone. It happens to just be right outside of the overlay zone, right here, it's just, it's just right outside. All of the neighbors within a thousand-foot radius were notified of the field trip and public hearing by mail on March seventh. And here's a little bit of background, the zone is RAS one, like I said, and the net lot area is fifty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight square feet, which is one point two-six acres, just barely exceeds the one point two-five for the smaller lots. And the gross lot area is one point five-seven acres. Existing building pad is thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-one square feet. Right now, currently there is an existing one thousand eight hundred ninety-nine square foot single-family residence that was built in nineteen fifty-seven. There is a four hundred and thirty-three square foot attached garage and a fifty-two square foot storage shed. The applications that were submitted were a site plan review for a one thou- a total of one thousand seventy-five square feet addition to the existing main residence in the city of Rolling Hills. Anything that exceeds nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet requires a site plan review. And also variances, variance applications were submitted for the construction be- because construction in the front yard setback. And also to waive the set aside area for the barn and corral, the thousand square foot required set aside area. Let's see, the residence currently is one thousand eight hundred ninety-nine square feet, they're proposing one thousand seventy-five square feet, bringing it to two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four square feet. The attached garage right now is four hundred and thirty-three square feet, they're gonna expand that garage to, it's currently a two-car garage and by expanding it with a hundred and forty-six square feet, it'll make it a three-car garage and the total garage space will be five hundred and seventy-nine square feet. So that, those two additions, that's for, that was part of the site plan review. There's also part of an administrative review, which is the attached covered porches, a total of four hundred and thirty-eight square feet of attached covered porches. A portion of the attached covered porches are part of the administrative review and a portion of them which are on the front are part of the variance. There's also an outdoor kitchen, fifty square foot outdoor kitchen, that's also part of just the administrative review. And there's a service yard, that's actually out of the setback and I didn't highlight it in green, but that is also part of the administrative review. Let's see, the project is well below all of the development standards, it meets all of the development standards in the city of Rolling Hills. As you can see, structural lot coverage will, let's see, the total, okay, so the, what is that, total structural lot coverage, four thousand five hundred and fifty point three square feet, total, the structural lot coverage is eight point two-seven, which is well below the twenty percent maximum. Total flatwork is, they're proposing a two hundred and twenty-four square foot small area that's gonna expand in the driveway, and that's three hundred and twenty-two square feet and so the flatwork percentage is five point eight-six, which is well below the fifteen percent maximum. There's no additional disturbance because it's already an area that is disturbed. I skipped this part right here, flatwork percentage, it's a very small part of the flatwork, which still is below. The building pad coverage existing, it's still below the thirty percent maximum. It's very minimum grader, grading, total of twenty-four cubic yards of grading and that's part of the administrative review. And the waiver of to, to waive the four hundred and fifty and fifty stable requirements and five hundred and fifty corral, that's a, that's part of the variance, that's a variance request. The lot is relatively smaller compared to all of the other lots in the city. The buildable pad area is thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-one square feet, which is very limited, there is a very, it's very steep in the back, so it's very, the buildable pad area is very limited. The main residence is illegal non-conforming because it already encroaches into the front setback. And the lot does not provide a safe and accessible future set aside area. This is the thirty-foot road easement and then there's the fifty-foot setback. This addition right here is a hundred and thirteen square feet, this is the, this is the secondary portion, this is the second, this is in addition to the secondary bedroom. The main addition, oh, also right here, this is the garage addition. And actually, this, this is where the garage door is, so when you access the property into the garage, you enter into the garage right here, the garage is accessible from the east. So the project proposes to expand the garage by adding the, with this addition right here, but this addition is also located in the fifty-foot front yard setback. So that's part of the variance. Also, the garage will be reoriented to the south. So this part is gonna, is where the garage doors will be. There's an existing porch right here, they're proposing a porch. This porch will extend from the existing porch, so there's an existing porch in the front and then they're gonna add on to the porch, it will extend all the way to the, at the end right here. As you can see, the house, this is the footprint of the house, it already encroaches into the front yard setback. So that's why the applicant is expect, is requesting the variances for the addition, a hundred and thirteen square foot addition here, a hundred and forty-six square foot addition here for the group, for the proposed garage and for the porches. It's an overview, an aerial view and, so you can see here's the existing building pad and then it slopes down. And there's a curve here, so it's very limited on parking and. Some pictures of the property, this is where the existing garage is right now and this area is flagged for, that's where the porches, the covered porches, the front, a hundred and eighty-two square foot covered porches that encroach into the front yard setback. This is where the new garage will be, so you'll drive in and then there's enough turnaround space for the cars to access the garage. I also wanted to mention that there is a covered porch area and this is where, this is not part of the discretionary approval, but it's part of the pro- overall project, it's the administrative review for the covered porch area and this is where the fifty square foot barbecue, outdoor barbecue will be located. The elevations, the proposed additions will match the existing elevations and just, I believe the highest which ridge height is thirteen point three feet. And here's the existing floor plan, right here. Existing floor plan and then this is the outdoor barbecue area with the extended porch. And this is the new garage extent, you know, so here's the existing garage and this is that portion right here that is part of the variance. So this section is not part of the variance, this is part of the site plan review. Community communication, on March nineteenth, the, the project was noticed in the Daily Breeze on March seventh and once again, the public hearing notices were sent to residents within a thousand-foot radius. Some project concerns, this morning at the field trip meeting, Judith Hanell, she's the resident at thirty-one Eastfield Drive came over to the, she was at the meeting, she expressed her concerns because a portion of her driveway is actually located on the property line of the Quino side. And also after the field trip meeting, staff and the architect Brett, Brett, we walked over to Mrs. Hanell's property to view the roofline of the proposed project from her property. And this is the view from her backyard. And if you can see right here, this is the top of the proposed addition. It's right here, so that is what you can see from Judith's house. So I'm not sure if that is a concern to her, but that's what we were able to view this when we went over to her property. The project is categorically exempt, CQ section fifteen-three-oh-three, class three, which is new construction of a single-family residence and accessory structures. I also, I think earlier, I, we, you discussed the walls, was that something that was brought up earlier? So I have these printouts from, can I hand these to them? The printouts from the. You wanted more details regarding the wall heights? You guys forgot to discuss that.
Thank you.
I forgot to include these into the PowerPoint, but.
So they are doing a stepped wall?
Yes. They're doing a step wall, but I guess on this, on the detail here, it looks like the wall height is at about four feet. The top of the wall is at four feet. On section A. We could make that a condition, I talked to the architect that we could keep that wall below three feet, so we could put a condition to where the wall height can't exceed three feet. Is that?
Okay.
So the recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony, then close the public hearing, discuss the project and then we've also prepared a resolution, you know, if you guys decide to approve the project. And if there's any questions, I'm here to answer questions and so is the architect.
Any questions?
Just one quick one, the two, I guess, the garage was becoming a three-car garage, is that right?
Yes.
And then in addition, I don't know, I just noticed the power lines, are, will they be undergrounded as part of this process?
Believe all, right?
We, we will open it up.
Okay, thanks.
No questions? Okay, thank you very much, very, very thorough. Okay, so at this point, tell me, I'm gonna open it up to the audience, if you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
Good evening commissioners, my name is Brett Buckman, I'm the architect on the project. I want to thank staff for doing a great job. It's, it's wonderful to work in the city, I love working every time in the city. But I wanted to just talk about, the site was, is a challenging site just because the, the buildable area is very small and most of it is in the front setback, so the, I don't, I don't even know how I would design a ground-up house on this particular site, but it's a remodel that has some existing non-conformities that we're asking for the variance. But we were able to do as much with as little as we had and to try and not infringe on, you know, other properties. But I'm here to ask, answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Yep.
So just so you know, if you tear a house down in the city, you can put a house back in in that footprint. So if you're in the front yard setback, if you're in the side yard setbacks, you can rebuild in that footprint. And the reason we did that is because it allows people to then put a basement in to get more square footage on challenging lots like this. So just for future reference, for whatever that is worth.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Judith Hanell, thirty-one Eastfield, I wanted to say thank you to the few of you that came this morning to the site. So I have a few things that I was gonna read, also my sister is here, we're co-owners of the house. So our parents lived, bought the house next door, we've lived there since seventy and my sister grew up there, I'm eight years older, so I was already out of the house. But the, I think I expressed to some of you this morning, the, some of our concerns are the way they have to swing around if they change the garage entrance. Right now, they just come straight off the street and they are using a side area to park, so we're just concerned that when they have to swing around to come to this new entrance, that the lights from the cars are gonna come into our bedrooms and bathroom. The property sits a little off kilter, so they're up a little higher and we're just down below. But, you know, the privacy is a big factor to us, so we think also that, you know, noise from cars coming and going, I mean, they're, they're pretty quiet neighbors, so it, it's just that we're also concerned like in the future, that if they at some point decide to sell, then we're dealing with somebody new with these issues. So, and as you can see from the patio deck, I mean Brett was nice enough and some of the staff to come over to my property and see, which I didn't realize because it's hard to see when you're looking straight on the house, but when you look from the side from my patio, because I'm down below and I look up, Stephanie showed one picture where we're gonna see the roofline, but we're also gonna see the fireplace in the master bedroom. And I, I mean, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying that it's, you know, something to consider, so it's, it's.
Is it the floor plan?
It was the other picture where you could see, the one that Brett took, the picture that Brett took today, yeah. So it's, it's through those other thinner trees that you can see flags, it's a little hard to see in the picture, but you'll see the fireplace sticking up and also to the right. And then also to the right, then on the other picture on the left, you do see the roofline. So, um, so we're a little, you know, concerned about that, and, um, um, uh, originally, when my parents moved into the property next, you know, where we are, the woman that lived in the house originally had just little stepping stones, because she knew that she couldn't put a driveway there. So the next person that came in before the Aquinos, he did the reconstruction and upgraded the house, which is wonderful. But he put this massive driveway in, did not inform us, did not get our permission. It was not to our knowledge that he was doing that. So afterwards, we had issues because he used to put pickup trucks and lots of kids coming and going. And it was really noisy, especially for my mother, who was elderly at that point. So as I said, the Aquinos are much quieter, but again, if they ever sell and somebody else comes in, I don't know how that's gonna be. So I think you understand what I'm saying, that right now, they just come straight into the garage, but with this new one, they have to swing around. And, and it turns out that that drive, the existing driveway is on our property. And, um, so, you know, that's a bit of an issue for future, you know, for what they decide to do here. Um, and, you know, at one point, we thought about putting a three-rail fence around our property, because we've had issues with the previous owner before the Aquinos. And then I just kinda held up, held off, and I put these ficus trees up instead. But I didn't go all the way to where the yucca trees are. And so I don't know with construction and stuff, how, if they're gonna hold up and whether we need to consider something about, about that. And, um, and I did tell the Aquinos when they moved in that there was an issue with the driveway. So it's a, now it's a whole new issue, though, because before it was just an issue that they just happened to park a car in garbage cans where my spot is. But now it's making a whole swing to access their garage. So, um, anyway, let me see if I had any other notes about this. So, um... Anyway, that's, that's pretty much the, the gist of it. And I think some of you that came this morning see what I was talking about, so, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you have, did you have another question?
My name is Janie Barelli, I also own part of thirty-one Eastfield. Okay, so I think what we're not realizing from these photos here is that their, their driveway, their garage is all forward of this. So where that's kind of like not a beautiful thing to look at, rooflines, you know, and, and maybe a fireplace. Farther up, which is where they're gonna come in at, is where our bedrooms, our bathrooms, where everything that goes on there is heard right below it. So it kinda sits right above us. So I think it's deceiving a little bit to see this and think, eh, who cares? It, it, it's really a big deal forward. It's never been anything we dealt with, I've, I, I'm sixty-three now, I've been there since I was ten, or owned the house since I was ten, lived there. It, it, it's a big deal. It's right above, you can hear everything that goes on above that. That's the master bedroom, the master bathroom, the guest bedroom. It's, it's very impactful to have the garage changed where you're not coming straight in, but now you're doing all that stuff right above all those rooms. So that's my input, but...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so I will close. I will close the public hearing, and let's talk amongst the commissioners. Who would like to start? Greg?
I think from a policy standpoint, I don't think the driveway is changing from where it was. Um, good point with the neighbor on, on the ownership of it, but it's kind of been there and nothing's been done about it. So the question is, I don't know what would have been done. Um, we allow usually, uh, parking in driveways, uh, in setbacks and easements, depending, and this lot is obviously challenged. From this view, I don't disagree that, you know, it doesn't look very impactful, I don't know what it means on the other. I think from the remodel standpoint, I see that as a little bit of a safety issue, is that it's a good thing, because you have to turn, and when you head out, you are not backing out into Eastfield. You are now being able to turn around, whether you park straight in or straight out. Most people park in, so the lights not necessarily are gonna shine at the bedroom, they may shine, uh, a little bit more south, uh, across. I, just my guess. Um, I, but I kinda see that as a safety issue for, for the current owners of the house, that that would be a positive. Um, I didn't have any other issues with the other development, 'cause that was, that was under your guys' purview more than us. I think you addressed the retaining wall, thank you for that. So, um, I had concern up front when I first got there about the patio extension and why we'd do that, but that was your first answer, it made sense, I think it might, nice and consistent. And you're not looking at a garage, but I think that's a positive thing anywhere around the city, is you're not looking at a garage all the time off of the street. So I think that's positive. Um, I hear the concerns of the neighbor, I don't exactly know how to approach that, though. Um, uh, I'd say I just don't know if that's justifiable to turn it down. So I, I'd be in favor of doing the slight remodel and turning the garage, I think from a safety standpoint, that would be better. And you're, you're not gonna get cars parking out there necessarily, um, a motorhome, a truck, or anything like that, because you'd be blocking the driveway. So, um, I'm assuming that, but, uh, that's typically how it would work. Um, but it also provides more off-street parking and safer in general.
Abby?
Um... I think the driveway, moving it, is actually an improvement. Um, and I, it is hard to tell from these photos how impactful it is. I don't know if we need to make another trip out there to see, or to address their concerns, or not, I don't know. Um, and it's kind of straightforward, I don't really have any issues.
Okay, thank you.
So the two variances, the stable set aside, makes sense, necessary, there's nothing that can be done there. And then is roughly four hundred and forty square feet in the front yard setback. Again, almost the entire house is in the front yard setback necessitated by the topography there. Um, definitely hear the concerns from the neighbors, the three concerns I heard were about the garage entrance, which you talked about. I do think it's safer to have it where it is. Um, but that coming with, uh, the, the view and then the noise and lights. Um, I, I don't know that, that that would increase with where the, the entry to the garage is, but then, you know, I'm thinking if the master bedroom is right at the property line, it doesn't change how the, the neighboring property can be used. Um, and then the driveway and the property line, I'm not sure, that was mentioned this morning, and I'm not sure, I didn't see where the property line was.
I, I don't know, that's our purview.
Yeah, so I, but those are the three concerns I heard, and I'm trying to figure out if, if there's anything that we can do to address those concerns or not, and I haven't come to a conclusion, there's something that we would do in terms of changing the approval process for this property to, to address those concerns. So I'd be in favor of moving forward.
Okay. Um, so m, m, my thought on it is, it's a very challenging lot. There is no place for a barn and a, and a state. You just, you have no access. There's certain lots in the city that just, it's, it's not a possibility. So, um, so giving the variance or the waiver for not having a barn, I, 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 I think it's appropriate. Um, I, I do agree that I think by taking the garage and putting it off to the side is more appealing, giving the house more street appeal, which hopefully is good for, for the neighborhood. Um, it, it is a challenging lot, and we talked about it this morning, um, that we have an overlay zone in the city, and it's specifically for properties like this that have a challenge, that if you lived with that fifty-foot setback, it would push the house into the canyon, right? So, uh, this should qualify for that, even though it missed it by a, a, a fraction of it, but I thi, I think it's a, a better design. Um, you know, unfortunately, on these smaller lots that are off the street like this, you're gonna get noise from cars coming in. I, I don't think the lights are going to shine into their property, 'cause it's going to pull in and go this way, and it's going to pull out and go that way. The lights are not, unless they back into the garage, the lights are not gonna hit the neighbor's house. Um, yeah, you may, you may get a little bit more noise when they pull in and out, but again, you're not gonna have that many cars, many, that many trips going, going in and out. Um, as for, uh, you know, seeing the ridge line and whatnot, I can see all of my neighbor's ridge lines, so it's, you know, I mean, I, I don't know what to do about that. Um, the, uh, the, the wall, if we can keep it under three feet, I, I, I think that solves that problem. Um, I like the fact that you're gonna have to put on, put in caissons. It just makes that hill that much safer, knowing that you're going down to bedrock and, and you've got caissons there. So that, that should make everybody happy. So I think all in all, it's a, it's a good layout. You're not trying to build a five thousand-square-foot house there, I mean, you're keeping it to a very small footprint, which is great, because it's a small lot, so that works well. So I, I really, I mean, I, I, I hear the neighbor's concern, but at the same time, I think we've gotta look at property rights and giving the, I mean, it, it complies with almost all of the, um, all of the different guidelines and ordinance and all of that, other than what you've got in the front. And I think it, it qualifies or should qualify for the, uh, the overlay zone. So that's kinda, kinda my thought on it, uh, so...
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt, approve Resolution number two zero two four dash zero four with...
Can you hang on one second? I'll, I'll open it up for a second. Please, if you wanna say something, you gotta state your name again.
Okay, Judith Hanell, thirty-one Eastfield. So as I said, I've never really had a problem with the neighbors, and they're great people, and I, you know, they're actually pretty quiet. I understand what you're saying about, because that is a curve, so I understand what you're saying about it being safer for the garage thing to be changed. I really have an issue, though, with this property line, because the, their driveway, they...
So I wanna, I wanna, I wanna stop you right there, okay? That's not per our view, okay?
Okay.
If you've got an issue with your neighbor and the property line, you need to come to the city, or the association, they can deal with that. That's not, w, we're not discussing that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure before you approve them being able to change their garage, they're then gonna be driving on that...
But they're not changing the driveway, the driveway is existing.
Well, the thing is that the driveway was changed without our permission and our knowledge to begin with.
So they had fifteen-foot and twenty-foot setbacks staked today, okay? So they don't have the right to come onto your property, they don't have the right to drive onto your property. Okay, so that's, that's a given. As to that property line and, and getting that established, you need to work with the appropriate parties to, to try to fix that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure it was on record that when you approved this, that there's still the opportunity to, to correct that.
Again, we're not, we're not discussing property lines.
Okay.
Right, so you have the, the, the right, and you can work with staff, and they can tell you what the process is and, and go to do that. And if somebody's encroaching onto your property, you should correct that. You, you, you know, I mean, over time, you, you can establish cer, certain rights by crossing over people's property, so you, you ought to fix it. But again, that's, that's not what we're looking at today. We looked at it staked and where the, where the, um, easement comes in and, and all of that.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm closing the, the, the public comment again.
Okay. Um, I'd like to propose that we adopt Resolution number two zero two four dash zero four with the addition, um, contingency that the retaining walls are not to exceed three feet. Okay? Um, and everything else is written.
Second. Great, all in favor? I, all opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, old business, I don't see any new business, John? Okay, schedule the field trips, do we have any for next time?
Looks like we would have, uh, we'll have twenty-three Crest Road East ready for the next meeting. And we also continue the, uh, previous project for that, that meeting in April.
Okay, so as of right now, why don't we schedule the field trip for seven-thirty on, uh, April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four? And if you have something to add, we'll do that. Uh, any items from staff? Any items from planning commission?
Nope.
We're a jerk. I, I didn't mean to embarrass you, I apologize. You're not a problem, you never are.